Hey, everybody.
Hey, Scott.
Hello.
Hello, how are you?
Looks like Ms. Shanice is on here, too.
Shanice is on here.
Hey, Shanice.
All right. All right. All right, it is 6:30. I think we are going to go ahead and get started. Just want to make sure I have the actual list of everybody that's here. So I have Ms. Stacy Benson-Taylor, Mr. Fairchild, Eric Grandy, Scott Sliver.
Sliver, present?
Sliver, sorry, Sliver.
Happens all the time.
And Shanice Turner-Sloss.
Hey, everybody. How's everybody doing?
Doing well.
Good. How are you?
Doing well, thank you.
Say that again, Sliver.
Sliver, you gotta kind of spit it out.
All right. So I think this is what we're gonna go with. I know there were two other people, two other candidates that were joining us, but let's go ahead and get started because we are live and we will be in at promptly at 8:30. So I want to welcome everybody to the Dayton Commissioner Primary Debate, brought to you by the Montgomery County West Side Democratic Club. I'm Davida Lattimore, an employee, resident, and small business owner here in Dayton, Ohio. And now I'm going to introduce to you, or let the candidates introduce themselves to you. And I would like to get started with Ms. Stacy Benson-Taylor.
Good evening. I'd like to thank you.
One minute as well, I'm sorry.
All right, no problem. Thank you, Davida. Thank you to the West Side Democratic Club. Again, my name is Stacy Benson-Taylor, candidate for Dayton City Commission. And I am running for Dayton City Commission because I believe that I can be a bridge for a brighter future for Dayton. Improving on what has not worked for the city and building on what has worked. We have a lot of passionate candidates in this race, and it is an exciting race. But I believe that passion plus experience equals progress, and I bring the experience. I've represented these employees at the city of Dayton before I left my job at the union for 15 years. I represented them through two recessions, the loss of a major airline, the transfer of the convention center to a private entity, and then through the last year of COVID pandemic trials and tribulations. And so I know this budget, I know this city, I know what services we need to provide, and I believe that I am one of the best candidates to be your next Dayton City Commissioner.
You can't miss that.
Right.
No, you can't. All right, thank you, Stacy. And next we have Mr. Daryl Fairchild.
Thank you, and thank you to the West State, or the West Side Democratic Club. I'm Commissioner Daryl Fairchild. I'm the only candidate in the race who has experience as a commissioner. I've served over now, I've just, I'm approaching the third anniversary of being on the commission. It's been a challenging three years, and I believe I've demonstrated strong leadership through very difficult times. And I also have been able to accomplish some of the things that I campaigned on. One of the things, primary things I campaigned on was to get a plan for our neighborhoods. And within a few weeks, we should have the fourth piece of our vision plan for our neighborhoods in place that will then round out the four vision plans for the whole city. For those who don't know me, I'm a lifelong Daytonian. I grew up in Belmont. I live in Dayton View. I'm a product of Dayton Public Schools. I have a daughter who just turned 11 yesterday, who is a student in DPS. And so I've been a part of... Thank you.
That's the main timer we have. Thank you, Mr. Fairchild. All right, next up, we have Mr. Jared Grandy.
All right, I'm trying to not let this timer get me. My name is Jared Grandy. I'm a lifelong Daytonian, lifelong West Dayton resident. I went to Meadowdale High School, then went to Sinclair Community College for a couple of years before attending the University of Cincinnati. I eventually earned a scholarship to Northern Kentucky School of Law, and then came back to the city of Dayton to work for the Urban League, particularly with at-risk youth and youth who had a touch with the criminal justice system. Then I worked for the Dayton Human Relations Council as a community police relations coordinator. And that gets at the heart of why I'm running. I had a chance to experience the collective strength and intellect and drive of our citizens. And I believe if we build a pipeline between our citizens and our government, then we can get a lot more done with their input. I think they're willing to do the work. I think they have the brain power to do what's necessary. I think if we invest our money wisely, and we invest in neighborhoods and in people, then we can continue to improve our city.
Thank you. Take that time.
Just under the buzzer.
All right, so next up, we have Mr. Scott Sliver.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Davida, and thank you to the West Side Democratic Club. I'm running because over the past 10 years or so, actually, over the past 30 years, I've been serving the city. But I started running a mobile food pantry about a dozen years ago. And I would have, you know, folks come up to me and just ask me if I'd ever considered running for office. They would always say like, hey, you should run for mayor, you know, because they don't necessarily have the language for what we're doing right here. But so that's kind of what spurred me to run. I have a professional background in advertising and marketing. I'm also the senior associate pastor at a church called The Dayton Vineyard that I helped to pioneer. It's a church of 1,500 or so people. I've been appointed to the Landmarks Commission that oversees the 14 historic districts. I'm also a member of the Community Police Council on one of the police reform working groups and on the Executive Board of the NAACP. Excited to be here tonight. Round three.
All right, and last but not least, we have Ms. Shanice Turner-Sloss.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Davida. Thank you to West Side Dayton Democratic Club. Let me ask you a question, Ms. Davida. You like nice things, right? I can tell by the way you dress from the head up, right? So my point is this, I am not here to defend my resume, my passion, or my commitment. I'm simply coming to the Dayton residents to say, I hear you, I see you, and I want to work for you on the next level. And that is as the next Dayton City Commissioner. I've been doing the work for over 15 years. I'm steadfast, I'm committed to it. And we need to really get back to what the crux of the issue is. How do we make sure that the residents in the city of Dayton feel valued? We have $147 million that's slated to come to the city of Dayton from federal aid. They need to be a priority. What I mean by "they," the people in this community. We have to make sure that we're building on the progress that has lacked, there have been made, to make sure that we have policies and programs to address the ills in our community. I'm the candidate.
Thank you, Shanice. And again, thank you all for your wonderful introductions. I'm going to go over the rules, but I do want to point out that candidate Jordan Morgan was invited, but is not able to be here today. All right, so for you all and also for those tuning in, I'm going to go over the rules and how we're going to divide out the two hours that we're going to be here this evening. So I will appoint the questions to each of you. Each person has one minute. One minute to re-
You are muted, Davida.
Just popped up that I was muted. Did you hear anything? Oh, my goodness. Okay. So I'm going to go over the rules on how the two hours will go moving forward. I will be initiating the questions to each of you. Whoever I ask the question to will have one minute to respond. The other candidates will have 30 seconds to respond, but how that will work is that we will only have time for three. To indicate that you would like to respond, you will have to raise your hand in the Zoom chat. Shanice, I don't know if I went over that with you, but if you go to, I believe, the participants link, there is a raise hand option that you will have to press if you would like to respond to the question asked to the original candidate for that question. Again, only three candidates can respond, and then the last 30 seconds of that time, we'll go back to the original candidate who was asked that question. No additional rebuttals will be allowed, and we will only spend three minutes per question. During the first hour of the debate, questions will be selected from the questionnaire that was sent to each of you. Questions will not be asked in any particular order. During the second hour of the debate, we will take questions from the audience submitted through the chat. Questions from the chat will be directed at a specific candidate because the people who are watching have that option to do that. If other candidates want to rebuttal or make an additional statement on the question, on the directed question, you will have to raise your hand in the Zoom chat, and you will have then 20 seconds to respond. Since questions from the live chat are directed to individual candidates, we will move forward in some cases to allow more audience questions to be asked. You are welcome to have your team members engage with the audience in the live chat if you cannot speak on the topic. Also, after the, after the debate, you are encouraged to go back and address comments in the chat. There will be a timer, as we have already been accustomed to, on the screen that will show you the amount of time that you have left remaining. Each candidate at the end will give closing remarks, and I again will let you know when it's your turn to give that, and you will have one minute. We do not intend to do this, but there is a mute option if you go overtime or if you just so happen to kind of butt into another candidate that is given a response to a question. If you exceed the speaking time multiple times, we will mute your mics in that instance as well and move forward with the debate. Does anybody have any questions? All right. Well, let's go ahead and get started. So I have decided to go in the order of the categories, and the first category is on decision-making. And Ms. Stacy, you are first. So Stacy, on several occasions, the city of Dayton has conducted nationwide searches to fill director positions for city departments. More than half of the city employees do not live in Dayton. Even fewer are West Dayton residents. Often, our educated and highly experienced neighbors have to relocate to other cities for competitive work and wages. How will we make sure our West Dayton qualified residents have an opportunity to obtain city of Dayton director, management, and open positions?
Excellent question. One of the challenges and obstacles that I've faced has been the promotional opportunities that exist for bargaining unit employees in the city to be able to move into management positions. And so we need to look at those positions because those are resume positions. A lot of our positions are civil service positions. But when we have a resume position, we need to certainly be working with our human resources department to look at the diversity in our hiring processes. And so I would work directly with HR, which I've done the last 15 years, to figure out what exactly is happening and why we do not have a pool of candidates that reflect our city. We should have directors and assistant directors that look like not just the employees, but look like the community that we work with. And so I think the best thing to do is to work with human resources to make sure that our qualifications, our minimum qualifications are appropriate and that we are reaching out to the appropriate candidates.
All right, do we have any other candidates that want to respond to that? Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Fairchild, okay.
Sure. I just want to say that since I've been on commission, we had one nationwide search, and the candidate that emerged as the qualified candidate that we selected was Erica Fields for the Director of HRC. And so I don't think having a national search is a barrier to our qualified citizens. I think it gives them an opportunity to demonstrate that they are as strong a candidate as any in the nation. And so I think having the nationwide searches helps to provide credibility and demonstrate that our candidates, people from Dayton, are strong candidates and can emerge in the top.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Grandy.
Yeah, I think we should invest in our people at an early age to make sure that they develop the qualifications to meet the needs of the position, first of all. And second of all, I think we need to be really intentional about going after people who have the qualifications that live on this side of town. And finally, I believe that we should... I lost my train of thought. Finally, I believe that...
Let me help you out real quick. So here's the problem, Ms. Davida. We have relied on the city of Dayton and our administration has relied on third-party organizations to allow to do, to assume the position of hiring. And so what has happened is because they have allowed that position, we have cut the cost in healthcare, which we know that is of concern considering that we have suffered a number of revenue costs. But the problem is, is that we have not created that pipeline. Back in the 60s and 70s,
Okay, thank you, everybody. And Stacy, I don't know if you have any closing remarks on this question. You have 30 seconds if you do.
No, no, no rebuttal on that.
All right. All right, our next question is for Mr. Fairchild. Last week, the Chief of Police announced his retirement after serving the city for 13 years. The city of Dayton announced they were conducting a nationwide search for the next chief of police. What kind of police chief will you fight to bring to the city of Dayton?
Sure. Thank you for that question, and it's incredibly important, particularly given the headlines of this past week. I think, you know, one of the drawbacks with hiring a police chief is that the way their pension system works is that even though we do a nationwide search, most likely, we're going to be constrained to a candidate from Ohio because people don't typically move across state pensions. But in terms of the qualities, I think we need to find someone who can relate to the community, that the community can see as a leader and can feel like they are generally concerned for the well-being of every citizen, and that can build the relationships that are going to be necessary. We have a good start on police reform, but to get it implemented is going to take a strong leader. And so we're going to have someone who's committed to that reform process.
Thank you. I wasn't sure if anyone was wanting to rebuttal or have any responses to that. All right, we're going to start with Scott Sliver. Sliver, sorry.
Thank you.
Forget it.
Yeah, can you not see my hand raised up in the room?
I can, but I have somebody that's jotting it down for me.
Okay, cool. Just for future reference. Okay, so I'm, you know, I'm well acquainted with the chief, having been on the, on the police council for the past three and a half years or so, and also having been on one of the police reform working groups. We need a chief that is going to value ongoing training and change, one that's willing to take a hard look at what's not working. I think oftentimes, you know, our current police chief just thinks everything is okay, and I think it's pretty clear that it's not.
All right. Next, we have Jared.
Yeah, we just talked about how we need more Dayton residents to fill these director positions. And here we go. We have a perfect opportunity to do that. And what I meant to say last time is we need to incentivize Dayton residents. Resident, residency rules are illegal, but we need to provide incentives. And we have qualified people within a police department, particularly officers of color, who can do well at that job. And the next person has to be committed to listening to the citizens and committed to reimagining public safety, not just these piecemeal reforms with...
Thank you. Shanice?
Yes, thank you. So we are at a very pivotal point right now, considering that with the five task forces that were developed to create an opportunity to reimagine how we police. So with the police chief announcing his retirement, this gives us an opportunity to, for one, to look at a police chief that meets all of the various criteria that we're looking for in a chief. Someone who is, has a relationship with the community, who is invested in the community, who's willing to...
All right, thank you. All right, so the next question is for Jared. The question is as follows. The city of Dayton is set to receive 147 million of funding from the latest COVID-19 stimulus bill. How would you push for West Dayton to benefit from the funding?
That's a great question. First of all, we need to make sure our budget is balanced, and we need to address looming problems, problems that have been problems on the West Side for a very long time. That is our infrastructure. That is all of these vacant properties, that is these empty lots. That is the illegal dumping that occurs on the West Side and poor areas of the city. All of those things need to be addressed. But after we balance the budget, address those things. We need to create jobs. We can use some of that money to give people a good start, particularly young people. We need to invest in programs that will get young people hired as apprentices, help them learn trades and new skills. We need to invest in those young people by investing in our youth and rec services and other things that will help them ease and transition into adulthood to become productive citizens of Dayton. We do a terrible job of maintaining talent. We talked about earlier hiring director positions and higher-level positions within the city. And that's because we suffer from a brain drain. So one, we need to invest in our young people by investing in their well-being, investing...
Thank you, Jared. This just in, we are now giving each of you a minute and 15 seconds to respond when you are appointed the question, and then for rebuttal, we're giving everyone 45 seconds. And so first up for the rebuttal to this question is Stacy.
Thank you. Everyone, we are excited about that 147 million because it will be a shot in the arm. But we also have to be mindful that the federal government has not issued the guidelines on that amount of, what the spending for that money is. We believe, well, we know that some of it is for revenue replacement to do exactly that, filling the gap for the employees and the services to make sure that our budget is balanced. We believe that some of it is going to be for investing in neighborhoods, investing in, you know, whether it's vacant properties, whatever the neighborhoods need. Some people in their neighborhoods want something different. But if it's infrastructure, if it's streets, if it's vacant properties, some neighborhoods want their parks to be upgraded. And so we have to be mindful of what the communities want, but we need to use that money to invest in our neighborhoods and our communities as well.
All right, Shanice, you're up next.
Yes, thank you for that question. So the $147 million is the question, right? How do we disseminate those dollars? The bottom line is this, I am a former city of Dayton employee. No one on this panel, no one who's running for a commission, has the experience and the passion that I have. I've done the job. I've managed the city of Dayton's federal and state funding, so I know how to allocate those programs and those dollars to make sure that we're answering the call and the needs of our residents. We need to make sure that we're using those dollars effectively and efficiently to make sure that we are addressing and to, to address and right the mistakes that we have made in the past from the segregation inequalities and the stagnation that we've experienced from past practices of the city.
Thank you, Shanice. And now we have Mr. Fairchild.
Thank you. I would think the top number one is to maintain our services to residents. But more importantly, you know, the, our neighborhoods in West Dayton have suffered from lack of investment. So this is an opportunity for investment. We need a clear housing program that would both provide for new home construction with a first-time home buyers program or programs to help people get into home ownership, remodel and save homes that we can and demolish where we can, or where we have to. And I think that strategy would then lead to business corridor, corridor investment and attraction of businesses because now you have a critical mass of homeowners and residents who can draw business.
Thank you. And Jared, for the last part of this rebuttal?
Yeah, I agree with Stacy, actually. We do need to talk to the residents about how they want this money spent. However, this administration has divested from pipelines of communication with its residents. So I'm running to help rebuild that pipeline so we can hear from the citizens and let, and hear from them how they want to see that money invested in their communities. So yeah, if we want to hear from the people, we have to give them the mechanism to be heard.
Thank you for that. All right, so next question is for Mr. Sliver. Dayton has declared racism as a public health crisis. As a commissioner, how would you address racism in our city?
Thank you for the question. I would say, just as I have been over the past five years, I guess, I've been on the board of the Dayton Unit NAACP, serving as Chair of Communication, Press, and Publicity. So I've been on a pretty steep learning curve. I've been on the Community Police Council, have learned a lot, have seen a lot, seen a lot. You know, we have been in the briefings when there has been a police-involved shooting. And of course, now it's like an everyday occurrence on TV. You know, you get a verdict from one thing, and then the next thing you know, a 16-year-old woman in Columbus is being shot. You know, it's one thing to say that racism is a public health crisis. It's another thing to actually act on it. And it's, it's sad that it took the killing of George Floyd and protests in the city of Dayton to, to move us forward in terms of setting up the police reform working groups. We're actually, I'm hopeful and pretty excited about the recommendations that have been put forth, that they're going to be implemented and funded. There are over 135 of them, and some of them are very powerful, and so...
Thank you. All right, and I think we have Mr. Fairchild for a rebuttal.
I would just like to say that, you know, for a white candidate to think about racism, it's part about finding a way to link your life with African-Americans. And I've had that experience in Dayton, growing up with mandatory busing, having classmates and teammates, and choosing to stay in Dayton and to continue to work on this. This has been kind of the seminal question of my life, and how do we undo it? And one of the answers is that white people have to talk to other white people about racism and make a commitment to be different. And that's something that hasn't happened, and we need to do, do that.
Thank you for that. And Jared, you're up next.
Yeah, the commission made that declaration, then turned around and defunded the one agency within the city that's specifically designed to address systemic racism. And that's the Dayton Human Relations Council. It was founded to address the issues that come about as a result of systemic racism. And what we did was, instead of funding that organization and propitied it up, we defunded it and continued to increase the budget of the Dayton Police Department. We need to reimagine public safety, and we need to support our institutions and get serious about addressing systemic racism.
Thank you. All right, and Stacy?
Yes, thank you. Excellent question. We have to create safe spaces where we can have conversation. What we learned, and I co-chaired the training committee with Commissioner Fairchild, what we learned is that if we don't begin to have the tough conversations, we cannot get to the bottom of the issues. And so we have to create places where we have safe spaces. I think reimagining the HRC and the services that they provide, very, very important. And, and the funding levels, you know, I understand that part, but we couldn't lay off people in other areas to fund vacant positions in one area. And so we have to be mindful of that. But we have to create safe spaces, just like we did with the task force for these tough conversations.
Thank you. And then Scott for the rebuttal?
You missed my hand, Davida.
I didn't, I didn't.
Oh, sorry. We only, Shanice, we only do three.
Okay.
Yep, sorry.
Catch you next time. Thank you.
Oh, Scott, you can go ahead. I'm sorry.
I didn't raise my hand.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that. All right, well, we're going to move on to the next question. And it is for Ms. Shanice. Shanice, candidates often speak of what they will accomplish if elected. How would you work with the rest of the commission to achieve these things?
So that's a great question. So because of my background and my experience, I have the knowledge and the commitment to do the work. So I'm willing to work with any and all of the candidates, and how I do so to make that a accomplishment. And how I do so to make that accomplished and successful is because I have the voice of the people with me um when I have the opportunity to serve as the next Dayton City Commissioner. So it's a matter of making sure that we know that three of the majority of the votes passes whatever legislation or ordinance or whatever agreements that are set before us. So with the opportunity to work with the residents, to be the voice for the residents, I believe that I can make just in that um the will of the people transpire through the legislation.
All right, thank you. All right, so I think Ms. Stacy?
Yes, um, thank you. I I have worked with, and it's an interesting thing because I'm constantly pushing back with elected officials, whether it's the City Commission, whether it's the County Commission. My job for the last fifteen years has been to push back on the decisions that they make. Um, what has developed, though, is a level of respect. And so although a lot of times I'm always questioning what these current commissioners do, we have a great deal of respect each other, with respect for each other and what we do do. And I believe it's that relationship that has been built out of sometime a cooperative relationship and sometime a little tougher relationship that makes me a very good candidate to work with city commissioners as well as county commissioners and other legislators throughout this area.
Shanice, would you like to respond to that or?
Yes, because of my experience, I'm ready to hit the ground running day one. I have a relationship with a number of the uh sitting commissioners and with those who come who are have the opportunity to come in once they are voted by the residents in the City of Dayton. My number one goal is to work for the residents of the City of Dayton. We have not seen the success of the residents' voices being heard by a current administration. And so my point is this, those who are aligned with the current administration, they have no say and they, I don't believe that they will be effective to making sure that.
Thank you, Shanice. All right, so we're back to you, Stacy, for the next question. So tell us, which is more important in making decisions? The loud voices online? Or the voices that come to you in private?
Good question. There has to be a balance. Um, there no no voice is more important than the other. Um, we have to look at what the issues are. We have challenges and obstacles. Um, as I stated, different neighborhoods need different things. And so I've attended a whole lot of neighborhood meetings. Um, and I've talked to people. And so some of the issues are the same, but some of them are different. And so we have to stay in tune with what's going on. One of the things that I want to do is create what I call an innovation council. I'd like for that to include high school students, college students, young professionals, uh, some of our more senior soldiers, as I call myself, and some of our retired people in the in the community. Um, and innovation, looking at um whatever is going on, similar to the current task force, but um not just specific to one topic. It might be innovation and where they see Dayton at. It might be um housing, it might be streets. It it could be whatever the community issue is at the time that people are really struggling with. But as a union rep, I have spent my my career listening to people and figuring out what the needs are. And I believe that it is important, whether it is on the internet or in person.
And as a follow-up to the original question, which is more important? The desires of those directly impacted by a decision or those outside of the impacted area?
We have to look at who's being impacted. Um, you know, it it's like I said, different neighborhoods have different desires. So to redo a park in one area and there are housing or street issues and then another area is really what who wanted the park, that doesn't make any sense. So we have to be in tune with the actual needs that exist.
All right, and I believe Jared has a response to this?
Yeah, uh, and again, I agree with Stacy. We need to hear from our citizens. However, again, our current administration for the last ten year has ten years has been divesting in mechanisms that allow communities to come to the table. So therefore, online is the only outlet people have these days. And it's the twenty-first century. Online communities exist and we need to acknowledge them and we need to engage. But we also need to reinvest in those community pipelines of communication um so that we have neighborhood power centers and people can tell us what they want. Um, we can't reasonably expect people to be able to communicate if we don't give them a mechanism to do so other than online.
Oh, um, my name's Valerie Duncan. I came in late, so I'm only missing the what the what the procedure is, I'm sorry.
Okay, yes, I will catch everybody back up um after this question has um been completed. Um, so I'm gonna go ahead and move forward with um Scott. And then after we uh finish addressing this question, I will then give you the proper introduction and get you in my lineup of questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So the question is, what is more important make uh, you know, in making decisions? The voices online or the voices that come to you in private? I I think every voice matters. I think uh people need to be heard. And uh when people aren't heard, they get very frustrated. And so I think uh our city officials need to actually take time and listen to people. I was always taught to find the grain of truth. Somebody could be really flipping out on me, really angry, yelling and screaming, and I'm still going to listen for the grain of truth in what they're saying to me. What is my part? What do I own? What are they saying that is uh that needs attention?
Thank you. And uh next up, we have uh Mr. Fairchild.
I think in making a good decision, you need to hear as many voices as possible. I have a preference for those who are impacted the most by a decision. Um, example, I and I've been committed to trying to bring more voices into decision-making, engagement and participation. One example I can think of is when the um the hate rally was gonna occur in downtown Dayton. There were really three groups of of responses. Some said we should do nothing, some said we should have an an alternative event and show our unity, and another group said I needed to be there. That last group was not being um heard or respected. At the last uh moment, the police came and said we could use marshals. I chose to be a marshal, recruited twelve other people with those people who wanted to be have their voices heard as well.
Thank you, Mr. Fairchild. All right, Stacy for the rebuttal?
Oh, I'm on, I'm looking for the mute button. Um, I have none. I think that we all covered it.
Okay, all right, thank you. Now, I would like to um take a moment to introduce Ms. Valerie Duncan, another candidate running for City Commission. Um, Valerie, if you would like to spend one minute to introduce yourself to um all of us here and those watching.
Oh, hi. Hi, my name is Valerie Duncan. Uh, I'm thank I thank the West Dayton Democratic Club to part inviting us and providing this meeting. Yes, there are a lot of issues that are concerning um the City of Dayton. And a lot of them have not been addressed properly. Uh, one of them is our our neighborhoods. We've done a lot of goodness, good things downtown on our on our housing development, but we need to do the same effort uh with our neighborhoods. And as as elected City Commissioner, I would do exactly that.
Thank you, Valerie. We are so glad that you could join us this evening. Um, I kind of had an order of how I was uh doing things, so I will add you in. Um, in my question lineup, I'm gonna continue with the order that I currently have. Um, just a brief description of the rules. Um, I ask each candidate a question. You have a minute to uh respond to that. Up to three other candidates will um have an opportunity to rebuttal. And after those three candidates have um shared their feedback, you have another opportunity um to go back to the original question that you were asked for thirty seconds to give your rebuttal as well. Um, if you go over that minute, you will be muted. Um, if there is any talking over any other candidate, you will be muted. Um, we do not um want to do that, but if we if it comes to that, we will. Um, and there's also, um, when you want to rebuttal, um, when someone else has asked a question and you want to give a response, there is a raise hand option. If you go, do you see that on your screen?
Is it on more than?
I believe if you click the Participants tab.
Oh, okay, I see it.
Then a raised hand, it's a blue hand that you can uh click. And depending on how quickly you get that in, we will put you in a lineup for rebuttals.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see that raised hand.
Okay.
Well, reactions as well.
Yeah, under reactions. Um, there's a reactions tab and then there's a participants tab.
A reaction tab?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't see that either.
Well, there's three dots that say more. If you if you tap that, it should.
Okay. Disabled video received. I still don't see it. I see it, it says participants, share screen chat, and and more, it says disabled video receiving.
Okay, so what what we can do in this case, if you would like to rebuttal, you can just physically raise your hand.
Raise my hand?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. I can do that. Thank you very much.
No problem. Okay, so the next question is for uh Mr. Fairchild. All right, so poverty has been an issue for many years. How do you realistically address the causes of poverty?
Well, that's a question that uh we've been facing for a long time. One of the things that the city can do is to have good wages for our employees because we can help set a floor for other employers in the region. Beyond that, I think, you know, the what we know has worked in some places is strong education so people have opportunity. That works best when we have a two-generation approach to addressing services for um parents alongside of um daycare and education for their children. And the city, wherever we can, to help support those efforts would be smart to do so. Um, I think trying to bring jobs in the close proximity or making um good-paying jobs accessible to our residents. For example, working with RTA to get express lane rides from our West Town Hub to our fulfillment centers out by the airport would do a lot for um our residents so that they don't have to spend an hour and a half on a bus where they could spend maybe thirty minutes.
Thank you. And Shanice for the rebuttal?
Yes, in September of twenty twenty, the City of Dayton was named one of the most impoverished cities in the nation. So what we have to do is we have to examine the root causes of how we got to that point. One is, we have to have livable wages in the City of Dayton. We have to make sure that we are attracting businesses to our area. And how do we do that? By investing in our community, by investing in our residents to give them access and opportunity for those jobs to make Dayton attractive. Secondly, we have to also look at policies and past practices, one being the dismantling of the Lot Links program. As the next Dayton City Commissioner, one of my goal is goals is to reinstitute and reestablish the Lot Links two-point-oh program by working in partnership.
Thank you, Shanice. And Jared, you're up next.
Yeah, one thing we can do is support our working families, support individuals' ability to create strong collective bargaining unions, uni-units, and to institute wage death ordinances. Uh, we have, we need to have policy that protects people's wages. And we have to do whatever we can to make sure people have a living wage so they can live comfortable life. I I I've seen these jobs uh disappear from our community and I've seen, but I also seen the benefits being a part of a union can provide. So I have a strong pro-union policy. I encourage you to visit the website to check it out. But we need to support our working families and 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 support.
All right, uh, Ms. Valerie, forty-five seconds for rebuttal. Valerie, you're you're still muted.
We still have opportunities. We still have opportunities. Um, they could uh one of the Wright-Pattair Air Force Base is it's our material command. They're becoming the Midwest Material Command. Um, and also, they're getting millions of dollars for uh the Space Force. So we need to help through our Development Department to locate, to determine, I'm sure, sorry, to determine what the criteria is to apply for these contracts and have cut through the red tape so that our businesses can apply for these contracts and and be successful. And then also, if there is.
I'm sorry, um, can we give her another fifteen seconds? Because I believe we missed any part of your rebuttal, Valerie?
Okay, great. Yes, and so um through the Development Department, we can uh Economic Development Department of the City of Dayton, we can help these contractors uh get uh create jobs here in the City of Dayton.
Okay, thank you. And uh Mr. Fairchild, I believe you would like to rebuttal?
Sure.
Valerie, you can.
I'm gonna respond, I'm gonna respond to a comment from the chat. One of the ways that this helps by having wages set, um, strong family-supported wages in the city is that then it requires other employers in the region to be competitive for good workers is that they have to match those wages. And then I would say that one of the things I've raised in twenty nineteen is that I think we should add to the city manager's evaluation is how many of our employees live in the city. We should run a city that people want to live in. That would be a good metric for all of us, city commissioner, city manager, all staff to be evaluated on.
Thank you, Mr. Fairchild. And really quick, I just want to go over um how we're doing this. So again, the first hour, we're gonna be asking questions that were um on our questionnaire. And for the second hour, we're gonna take questions from the audience uh from the chat. Next up for question is Jared. And now we're switching to, we just finished asking questions uh from the decision-making um section of my questions, and now we're getting into neighborhoods. Right, so Jared, the homeless population has increased significantly over the past year. What will be done to improve conditions amongst the homeless, including shelters and places that are supposed to be safe zones?
Yeah, so the City of Dayton has a lot of vacant property uh that the city itself owns. Uh, maybe we can start to explore how to use that property to create safe spaces for our homeless population. Um, I think we need to get way more creative about solving the issues that we currently have. Um, and here we have the chance to kill two birds with one stone. We can get rid of some of these vacant properties or we can occupy some of these vacant properties and provide safe spaces uh for our homeless population. Um, I think we need to do more to support our homeless population and we need to build uh pipelines uh in partnerships with the uh the the community operations that already do, the organizations that already do.
Yeah, all right, so we have Ms. Shanice.
Yes, so the issue of our neighborhoods and homelessness is this. And we it actually goes back to the initial question and how we address poverty. The City of Dayton in December of twenty uh two thousand and nineteen made a conscious decision to disseminate uh dismantle, rather, excuse me, the Lot Links program. What I'm proposing is that we reestablish the Lot Links program to help address the issues of homelessness, but also to help minority uh neighborhoods and minority communities to build wealth and to build equ- equity. And how do we do that? By giving them access to a number of these properties that are in fact slated for demolition or that are falling in the gaps of out-of-town investors.
Thank you. All right, and Scott?
Thank you. Yeah, homelessness, it's a tough one. Uh, you know, people need to be treated with dignity and respect. Uh, many folks who are homeless are uh veterans. There are oftentimes mental health issues that uh just make things even more difficult. And, you know, our businesses downtown certainly were, you know, uh, you have Saint Vincent de Paul and um there's not a lot of other resources for folks. I mean, if it were up to me, if I could just wave my, you know, magic wand, uh, I would take a building and turn it into a homeless shelter and make it really, really nice. Uh, and people would, they would rebut that and say, well, yeah, but then you're gonna have more people come. Uh, and people would, they would rebut that and say, well, yeah, but then you're gonna have more people come into our city that are homeless. Well, okay, so be it. I, I want to take.
There, would you like to, um, end with a rebuttal on that?
Yeah, I, I would just like to kind of piggyback on what Shanice said. Um, we had a program and we've had programs that um, increase access to housing. For whatever reason, we chose to dismantle those and we have giving, uh, large developers favorable conditions for them to come in instead of dealing with the issues that we already have in place. So, um, I think we need to reinstitute these programs that increase access to housing.
Thank you. Alright, the next question is for Sky. Issue nine, promise improvements to our streets. However, potholes continue to be a significant problem in many West Dayton neighborhoods. What are plans to improve our roads in West Dayton sooner than later?
Yeah, what a great question. Well, first I'll start by saying, uh, I supported publicly issue nine back in twenty sixteen. Uh, I was at the press conference, um, with the mayor and city manager and, and other community leaders. Um, you know, that money, seventy percent, uh, of that money that was raised by that tax increase is paid by people who don't live in the city, but it benefits our citizens. Um, you know, potholes are always a problem. I remember when I ran for city commission, uh, six years ago, this question came up. One of the first questions asked me was, well, what are you gonna do about getting Hoover Avenue paved? So I called Fred Stovall. And I said, Fred, how's this work? And he said, well, you know, we're, we're getting ready to, uh, start paving Salem Avenue. And I said, when was that decision made? And he said, it was like seven years ago. So it takes a long time. I know there's a plan, issue nine. I mean, I even brought this up because I knew it was gonna come up. Uh, you can see all the, the, you know, the different parts of town that have been paved already. Um, you know, they haven't paved Salem Avenue start to finish, but the city is making progress. I know the pandemic has slowed that progress, but, uh, you know, um, yeah, I think, uh, potholes are a problem.
I just have a quick question, um, in regards to that, uh, because somebody like myself, I, I don't know what that process looks like. So you said seven years ago, this was put in place and they're just now paving.
They just paved and in twenty, I was running in twenty fifteen and Fred said to me, the decision to pave Salem Avenue was made, I think it was seven years prior. And I said, so I could go on the campaign trail and say, if I'm elected, I could get Salem Avenue paved next year. And he said, well, yeah, you could say that because it is going to be paved. So, you know, issue nine, uh, I think, and Commissioner Fairchild would know this better than I, but there's like eighty percent of the roads are going to be repaved over the next decade based on issue nine. Don't quote me on those numbers, but it's something like that. So it just takes a long time. They just chip away at it.
Interesting, okay. Um, Ms. Shanice, you, uh.
We have an opportunity. We need to invest in our infrastructure. So here's the problem with that. With the hundred and forty-seven million dollars that is slated to come to the city of Dayton, there's gonna be a huge problem in how we effectively, uh, disperse those dollars. And one of the reasons that we're running into this issue is because we don't, we simply don't have the manpower. We've cut our workforce by one-third. That is a huge problem as to why a number of these streets, a number of these services are not being rendered because we have cut our, our services and we cut our manpower. We gotta get back into building our capacity up so that we can pave our streets. So we are able to, um, meet the, the needs of our residents. And again, it starts with building up our capacity.
You Shanice, and next up we have Jared.
Yeah, as Shanice mentioned, uh, Dayton was declared one of the poorest cities in our entire United States of America. Um, and so we're taking a poor population and then asking them to spend money on their suspension, on their tire rods, on flat tires caused by these potholes. We need to get aggressive about improving our infrastructure. And while we improve our infrastructure, we can create jobs. It needs to be a priority. Um, because it's costing people money, people need work, and we can solve these problems. We just have to be aggressive about it. Um, and, you know, I hear Scott saying seven year, I, I get what he's saying, but it's unacceptable. People are spending money, um, repairing cars and money they don't have repairing their, uh, vehicles because of these roads.
I agree. Alright, um, Miss Stacy?
Thank you. This is absolutely a staffing issue. Um, again, a workforce has actually, over the last fifteen years, been cut more than half when you look at simply the bargaining unit that is responsible for public works. Um, so those, those employees are spread extremely thin. And so it is a, a staffing and a hiring issue. Um, we also have to look at the fact that what happens is those streets are, are driven by experts who then determine the order in which they are paved. There is also the issue that those streets then have to be paved as it relates to other utility companies putting down water lines, et cetera. So there's some things that come into play, but we need to communicate better with the citizen.
And I think I want to hear from all candidates on this topic. So, Ms. Valerie, can you share your thoughts on what are plans to improve the roads in West Dayton?
Okay, well, yeah, there is a master plan and it, it, it takes, I think it should be, I thought, uh, every eight years, I'd have to check now. That a, a road should be repaved. I mean, some roads haven't been paved, repaved over twenty years. So, as a city commissioner, I would review the, the whole procedure about how roads are paved and, and, um, adjust things accordingly to where the need is. If there's, there are roads that haven't been repaved for over twenty years and they need it, then tho- those should be the priority and, and then the list should go down.
Okay, and, uh, Mr. Fairchild?
Sure. Um, when issue nine was passed, I was a citizen and I raised concerns because I did, wasn't comfortable with the process. There wasn't citizen engagement prior to this. And so I wanted citizen engagement before we just announced we were gonna raise this. I also didn't think that citizens should have to pay additional money for a basic service, which was pavement of the roads. And so, um, it's an eight-year levy, and so in eight years, that should, um, repave about eighty percent. But, um, some roads are thoroughfares like Salem, and then those get state and federal dollars. That's why those take longer. Your residential road shouldn't take that long in front. We should be able to do that as we determine by the, um, the condition of the road. And I know some people told me their roads. So there should be a regular cycle for paving that is just a part of our basic services.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for sharing your, uh, feedback on that topic. Alright, the next question we have here is for Ms. Shanice. Um, so Shanice, there are plenty of vacant houses in West Dayton, but very few opportunities for West Dayton residents to purchase property in our area. How will you help West Dayton residents own property in West Dayton?
So, great question. I've already alluded to the answer, and that is reinstituting the Lot Links program by working in partnership with Montgomery County's new treasurer, which is John McManus. If we build that relationship in which that is one of my platform points, that we need to strengthen our relations, our business relationships, not only with the, um, businesses that we have in our area, but also with our neighboring municipalities as well as the county. So my goal is to make sure that we bring that program back. We provide programs such as my, uh, Fix My Block initiative will allow, which will allow low-interest loans and grants to be afforded to residents in the city of Dayton. We gotta start investing in our residents. We give tax abatements to all of the big, uh, out-of-town developers, but that needs to be reciprocated to the residents in this community, those who have chosen the city of Dayton as their place to live, work, and play. And we can do that as Shanice, as me, as the next Dayton City Commissioner.
And this is another question I would love to hear from everybody on. So next, I would like for Ms. Valerie, if you could give me um, some feedback on this topic.
Thanks for the question, yes. And not only in West Dayton, but all over are we having problems with, uh, neighborhood um, housing blight. Uh, this is the re- the reason why is that at one time, the city of Dayton Division of Housing was funded by block grant money. But as our population has gone down, so has the funding level. And the city of Dayton, the city commission, current and past city commission have not committed to, um, fund the, uh, Division of Housing with general fund money. And so the, the number of housing inspectors have gone from thirty-six down to two.
You Valerie, um, if I could hear from Stacy?
Thank you. Can you repeat the question again, please?
Yes, ma'am. Um, so there are plenty of vacant homes in West Dayton, but very few opportunities for West Dayton residents to purchase the property in our area. How will you help West Dayton residents own property in West Dayton?
So, um, like many of the other candidates, I do believe that it is important that we have an option, um, similar to Lot Links. There were issues with Lot Links. Oft- oftentimes, the properties that came out of the Lot Links program ended up backed with delinquent taxes, et cetera. So there were some challenges and obstacles to that program. Um, revamping it, as some of the other candidates have said, very, very important because if people can purchase those properties, um, and then we then invest in the, in, in them maintaining those homes. Home ownership is tough. And so we have to have a twofold program, putting people in homes, but then making sure that they can maintain that home ownership. That's what brings our community up. And so we have to have a Lot Links type option available.
Thank you, Stacy. If we could hear from, uh, Mr. Fairchild?
I, I agree that we need to do something, but it's not that homes aren't available, they're available. The question is the qual- quality of those homes. And so I think the city really needs to have, what I talked about earlier, is a real strong housing program and neighborhood development, um, vision. And I see that as investing in new home starts, subsidized to a point where people can buy in at their, um, at their wages so they can sustain those, rehab the ones that we can and demolish the ones that need to go. And getting stable neighborhoods. I mean, right now we have a desert, uh, um, a real estate desert in West Dayton. And we really need to recreate a market where people want to buy homes, maintain those homes, and have the opportunity.
Thank you. Alright, if we can hear from, uh, hear from, uh, Darryl, I'm sorry, um, Scott?
Yeah, thank you. Well, you know, obviously, in order for somebody to own a home, they have to have a job that pays a living wage so that they can afford one. I mean, my wife and I bought a house at, uh, West Second Street in Euclid. It faces the back of Mount Ian and Church. We paid thirty-five thousand dollars for the house that we live in. Uh, it's a, it's a beautiful home. They're affordable. And I think if, if a person has a job, uh, we should do everything that we can, provide grants or low-interest loans so that, so that people can get in the home. You know, the difficulty is so many of the homes have been stripped of their copper, or, you know, even if you gave somebody a home, it needs a new roof. Do they have the ten thousand dollars that it's gonna take to put a new roof on it? So, uh, but I, I think there are homes available and we should help people get into the ones that are available. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, and last, uh, Jared?
Yeah, I could reiterate what, uh, every other candidate said, and I agree with them. Uh, but quick story, when I was a teenager, my family was homeless for a couple of years. However, a new development, uh, arose in, uh, Southern Dayton view. And, uh, a part, as a part of a community benefit agreement, some of those houses had to be, uh, mixed in, uh, reserved for low-income families. Um, because we had that policy, because that agreement was in place, my family found a safe space to live. And I was able to finish high school house and, and secure. Um, and we need to be more aggressive about creating these safe spaces and doing what's necessary to help our most vulnerable population.
Thank you, Jerry. Alright, so we are gonna, uh, go to our last question, um, as far as the questions that I have here in my questionnaire. And we are ready to, uh, take it to our audience. But before we do that, um, I would like to appoint this question to Valerie. Valerie, many renters live in houses that lack necessities, water, heat, work and applications, and et cetera. How will your administration ensure property owners provide resi- residents livable conditions?
Well, that's a good question. And again, that's, that's one of the ways is through the, the, our housing division, it, it has, it has a code where it has, uh, requirements of every rental property still has to meet certain code requirements. But there's not enough inspectors to, to, um, make an annual inspection like we used to do that. Um, also, just to piggyback on, on these, um, for West Dayton and the other neighborhoods, uh, we can create tax abatement areas for low and moderate income families. We have, we have them for high-income families. That, that's downtown. And the, the people that, the corporations that can put in these lofts, we should have a tax abatement programs for low-income, uh, housing. And yes, there should be low-interest loans, and there should be where we can turn around these houses and for one dollar, a person could become a, uh, a homeowner. There are so many programs that we have discontinued and we need to restore them.
Thank you, Valerie. And I believe we had Stacy, who would like to respond to this as well?
Yes, um, definitely have to, um, create opportunities. And I think we do that through communication. We have to be mindful that the city doesn't have an end-all, open budget and that the statutory services have to be provided first. Um, then when we look at investing, I think we also need to be creative and look at how we connect people with the services and the grants and the options that provide these things. Even when it comes to the abatements for downtown, because the market is so good, the city hasn't had to give a lot of abatements because people want to come. So that, that money is not just readily available anymore. And so we need to be creative in how we approach this and what connections we make for people.
Thank you, Stacy. Next up, we have Darryl.
Yeah, I, I just want to say that, um, there are, um, CRAs, uh, Community Reinvestment areas in the city in, around many of our historic districts and some of our other neighborhoods. So there are opportunities for regular folks to, to get those. Um, we still have used abatements downtown. The key thing we have to be mindful of, though, when we talk about giving abatements, is the place that that hurts is our children. Because those abatements are for real estate taxes, and those real estate taxes go to fund our school. And so we have to be mindful that if we want to advocate for abatements, we're, no, I'm, we're taking away resources for our children.
Darryl, and, uh, Shanice?
Yes, so I think we addressed this issue too, Phoe. We have to, again, make sure that we, in, in fact, provide those opportunities. But we need to reimagine how we are utilizing our housing inspection staff. As already mentioned, our housing inspection staff went down from thirty-six housing inspectors for sixty-five neighborhoods down to two. So we have to reinvest in our staff and building up that capacity, but giving them the opportunity to provide access to low-interest loans and grants so that our homeowners, our residents, our, um, tenants and our, and, and those who are living in the city of Dayton have opportunities for those available services to make sure that they're living in decent, affordable housing. I'll share this real quick. That is the issue, that people are living in structures that are literally boarded up from the back to the front, from the back door to the front door to the windows.
Alright, alright, so now we're gonna take it to the questions from, um, the audience. And, um, I'm gonna give Valerie, again, another opportunity to respond to this question first because this was open to everyone. And so the question is, Valerie, what are your plans to support local, small, black businesses?
Okay, you know, there's a lot of programs through the state. Now with this COVID-nineteen, there's all sorts of programs because of, of the federal stimulus money. They have a lot of loans, low-interest loans, and. and, and even grants for small businesses. And again, that's our development department needs to help. And our public relations department through the manager's office needs to help educate our small business owners as to the availability of these grants and loans. And then also, uh, we can assist them, again, to cut through the red tape and educate them as to what the criteria is so they can, uh, make applications correctly and make sure that they, they get to the, the proper, um, State of Ohio a, a small business, uh, development department.
Do we have anybody else that wants to give an additional statement on this question? And the question again is, um, what are your plans to support local, small, black businesses?
Yes, I'll tell you real quick and short. My plan is, we have an initiative, Cut the Tape. And what we're speaking of under our, under my candidacy is that we're going to provide those low-interest loans. We're going to provide and making sure that we give grants to small business owners in West Dayton. And how do we do that? First, we need to make sure that we reinvest in our HRC, our, that program to provide that technical assistance that's needed for our small and minority, uh, businesses and contractors in the city of Dayton. Not only will they be able to, to grow their business, but they can expand and, and enlarge in their resources to, to be able to compete for those larger, uh, bids and contracts throughout the city of Dayton. So that is one initiative that we're pushing. Uh, we believe that we, it, how
Right. Thank you. All right. Uh, anybody else?
Yes. Um, I agree wholeheartedly with Shanice. Again, we declare public, uh, racism as a public health crisis and then defund it, the agency that's responsible for helping us through these issues. The HRC has a couple of programs that help small and minority businesses get business, uh, grow their capacity and get business with the city. Uh, we can't say that we're trying to address these issues and then don't support the agency that, uh, wants to address these issues. And also, there shouldn't have to be a go-between. There shouldn't have to be a middleman. The city should do a better job communicating with its small and black-owned and minority-owned businesses. The city doesn't do a good job with that right now because, again, they cut off all mechanisms of communication. Uh, we need to reinstitute of communication and communicate directly with our small businesses and black-owned businesses.
All right. Thank you, Jared. All right. This next question came in specifically, oh, I'm sorry. Did you have a rebuttal deal?
Well, I just wanted to add that, you know, one of the reasons that I voted no on the current general fund budget was because we were underfunding the HRC. And that's where the Business Technical and Assistance Center is. And that's a key tool for our, uh, minority, small-business, women-owned businesses. I've worked with that department since I've been on commission. And I'm proud to say that we've seen, um, at least one, one company come through and get a demolition contract that hadn't got one otherwise. And so I was proud of, of that opportunity. And then this is where I think we can use some of those dollars from the, um, rescue fund to invest and make real our commitment that we did when we did the, um, the arcade. We've said we're going to take that out to the neighborhoods and we've got to, uh, make sure that that becomes real.
Thank you. And Darryl, this question came in specifically for you. So the question is, Darryl, how will you use LotLinks differently to avoid outside investors taking properties?
Well, I, I think that was a weakness of the LotLinks program. And I think we've overestimated what the LotLinks program can do. The LotLinks program simply allows the land bank to clear off the back taxes and make it available. And it doesn't provide, um, the resources to bring that house up to a livable standard. It doesn't ensure that, um, it doesn't incentivize first-time homeowners. And so I think that's why we need to have a, a robust housing development program. I think LotLinks, people are, you know, think about LotLinks because it was the only tool that we offered. And that was wrong. What we need to have is a robust housing development and, uh, program in, in place of it. And so that's why I thought that the, um, LotLinks should be set down, but that we needed to replace it with something. And that's what I've been working for is, is replacement. We've have used, um, that land bank into two of our neighborhoods, the Pineview neighborhood and now in the Huffman, um, area. I think we're learning how to use that process better than what the LotLinks program allowed. But I think that people are right, that we need to have some programs and invest dollars into them to create opportunities for homeowners.
Thank you. Does anybody else have, um?
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Fairchild. Um, LotLinks didn't go far enough, but we threw out the baby with the bathwater. We wasn't supposed to get rid of the whole program. We were supposed to rethink, reinstitute, uh, reimagine what it looked like. And, uh, he's right. It is, it, it's really dependent on the county. And from our perspective, the city has had a terrible relationship with the county. We need to sit down with the new treasurer, Mr. McManus, and hammer this thing out so we can create policies that get people the houses that are vacant and, and become eyesore in our neighborhood.
Thank you, Jared. And I believe I saw Valerie raise her hand.
Yes. Um, the LotLinks had, did have a lot of problems with it. They, they need to recreate a, a new program. And now they need to go back because some of these investors have, you know, they outbitted the, the, uh, resident, residents that were interested in these properties. After you, you, uh, allow a property to go, uh, without paying a taxes for so long. And then you come back, these property owners wanted to come back, resident owners wanted to come back and purchase these properties, like so, like say, for six thousand dollars or whatever. Well, these investors came in and swooped them up. They spent sometimes twenty thousand on a house. There's one off of Fairview. And, and that, and now that, that house is going to be there because it's going to cost sixty thousand dollars to fix it up. So now they're going to spend eighty thousand dollars on a house that's not even worth twenty thousand.
Thank you, Valerie. And, uh, Scott, I believe you, um, would like to respond to this as well. Okay?
I don't know if you've ever pulled up, uh, the county map of properties that are delinquent on their taxes. But I was in a meeting with the North Main Corridor Planning Group, uh, a while back. And they had, uh, you know, a mounted map of delinquent properties just from uh, North Main, like say from Helena Street up to maybe Hillcrest. And the map was just, uh, just littered, sprinkled with red of, of properties that are delinquent. So it really is a problem and there's, you know, we need to figure out how to bring back the program and how to make it work for citizens that are here so that they can own a home, not just for outsiders to.
Thank you. All right. So this next question, I am.
Do I get the rebuttal?
Sure. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I saw, uh, Deja had, had a question. I'm not sure if I, how to articulate this stronger. LotLinks, I think the Huffman District, um, is going to help us to develop the program that needs to be in place because what we're seeing over there is that in some places, there are not markets for the houses that are abandoned. And so then the question is, what, um, tools and resources can we bring alongside of the wiping away the taxes, which is all that the, um, LotLinks program was able to do? And that program that then has development, we can control who receives those properties more so than we did with the LotLinks.
Thank you, Deja, for that question. And thank you, Mr. Fairchild, for responding.
Can I just chime in on that real quick? I, I would just want to say this. Here, here's it. This is a, a constant theme that we're dealing with, with our current administration, even, uh, past administration. What we're looking at is when there are programs or initiatives that are essentially need to, to be re-examined or where there may be some issues. However, what we're doing is we're, we're throwing them away. We're dismantling the programs, i.e. the, uh, priority board system that we had in place, which was a world-renowned a citizen participation form of how we interact with our, our government. The second is the LotLinks program, which is instead of dismantling the pro, the programs, looking at how do we make it better? And how do we increase, um, the services that they were intended and the purposes that, for which they were intended and how they were developed?
Okay, thank you. All right. So just really quick. Um, I know that some of us are looking at some of the questions coming through on Facebook, but we are actually on a first-come-first-serve basis. So we have, um, we're recording the questions. So we want to make sure that the questions that got in, in time from the audience are answered in the order that they were received. So, um, if you could just hold my lead, that would be awesome. Okay, so this next question, um, I believe this is for Darryl as well. What is your track record of engagement with the LGBTQIA community? What can you do for them as commissioner?
Yeah, so, um, I have a long track record of standing alongside my gay, lesbian, transsexual, bisexual, questioning, um, um, citizens, residents, neighbors. Back in the, uh, I guess it was early nineties, I was fighting for marriage equality within the church and the ability to do holy unions within the United Methodist Church, as well as to ordain gay and lesbian colleagues into ministry. So, um, I've been fighting that fight, um, continued to fight that fight. I think our ordinance in, uh, Dayton was right to, um, protect all their rights. And I would continue to defend that. I know that there are people who disagree with that position. But I believe that, um, all people need to be celebrated for who they are. And I will fight for their, um, values and their right, uh, to be celebrated in our community.
Thank you. Um, Scott, did you want to respond to that?
Yeah, just two Fridays ago. Thank you. Can you hear me? Just two Fridays ago, I got a call from, uh, a friend, Michael Knote, who runs Have a Gay Day. Uh, he said that there were fourteen cases of frozen pizzas that were being made available via the, uh, LGBTQ center, Randy Phillips, um, and in Dayton. And Michael reached out to me because no, no other pantry that they knew of had a place or the ability to store those pizzas. So, uh, Randy dropped them off to me. I loaded them in, into my truck, took them out to, uh, Marlin Shackleford, who, uh, took them out. He and another person took them out to refugee families on that Friday night. So I'm happy to partner with anybody that, uh, that wants to partner. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next, if we can hear from Stacy?
Yes, I've had the opportunity to represent people from a diverse background. And, and throughout my career, um, I have made sure that, uh, no matter a person's sexual orientation, that they are treated fairly. Um, I negotiated that in contracts, made sure that, uh, there was medical opportunities, healthcare opportunities. Before the law was passed, that there was healthcare opportunities. And I supported the city when they created, uh, the resolution to ensure that, um, uh, same-sex couples were treated the same as, um, uh, heterosexual couples. And so I would continue to support that and make sure that all opportunities that we have available in the city of Dayton exist for all citizens, no matter of their, um, orientation.
Thank you. Uh, Miss Shanice?
Yes, I think it's important that when you talk about the LGBTQ community, we need, need to make sure that they have access and opportunity on all fronts, including housing, which has been a huge issue. And so as the next Dayton City Commissioner, I will continue to make sure that I'm pushing for policy and programming to assist, to assist all residents regardless of their sexual orientation or their, uh, race, ethnic group, or whatever the case may be, that everyone is represented and that everyone has access and that they are treated fair.
Thank you, Shanice. Uh, Jared, we can hear from you?
Yes. Fortunately, the city of Dayton has ordinances that, that go further than the United States Constitution. And it provides protection for LGBTQIA-plus community. And I hate to belabor this point, but again, we have defunded the only agency that, that's, uh, designed to, uh, enforce the ordinances that provides protection for this community and other marginalized communities. So we, we're not, in order to not be so, um, performative about our support in order to actually support the, our, that community, we have to, uh, fund the, the organization that actual provide, actually provides protection, uh, for that community. And I would never pull, I have a gay friend, um, uh, uh, thing out the bag, you know? We need to, as a city, communicate with all our communities. And so my position is, I will bring people from that community to the table how I can support them. Cause I could never know, um, how to actually support. I would have to bring them to the table so they can, uh, educate me, how I can be a better a- advocate for the community.
Thank you.
You got a black friend, too.
Correct.
All right. Uh, if we could hear from Valerie on the same question?
Yes. Uh, thank you for the, the question. Yes, we, we need to support our LGBTQ T I plus community. And we need to have them, if we're, if, if we're really committed, really committed to that, then they need to be at the table, like at, for the, um, the police reform. They should have been at the table. The, the immigrant, uh, community should have been at the table. And all other diverse groups should be at the table. If we want diversity, then that, those groups need to be at the table right at the beginning. And I would ensure as, as a city commi- commissioner that when we're negotiating something, uh, change in our ordinances, that all groups are, are involved and all groups are at, at the table at, right at the beginning.
Thank you, Valerie. All right. This next question, I want to start.
May I please? Ms. Duncan, were you, were you in one of the police reform working groups?
No, I wasn't.
Yeah, well, I'm just telling you that all groups were represented in those five groups. There were a hundred and twenty-five people. There were, there were people from the LGBTQIA. There were, I had an immigrant in my group. So I, I've heard you say that a few times and I just want you to know, people were well-represented.
Well, I'm glad. But I, that's what I would ensure at every, every, and every instant that we would have all people involved so that we were really, really ensure that there is diversity.
Thank you all. We, we need to move on. So my next question, um, actually, we're going to start with you, Scott. If you could pass three laws immediately for the city of Dayton, what would the focus of those be?
Three laws?
If you could pass three laws immediately for the city of Dayton, what would the focus of those be?
First one, I, I don't know that I would call these laws, but, uh, let's call them ordinances, okay? Resolutions. One of them would be from my police reform working group. Um, I don't know if you're aware of this. Uh, I was in the community engagement group. And a fourteen-year-old or a minor can waive their Miranda rights when they're being questioned after being accused of committing a crime. They can be, uh, they can be alone. They would not have a parent, a guardian, or an attorney present. And I mean, it's stunning that, uh, that that can actually happen. Uh, so that's one of the, uh, recommendations that our group proposed. And, um, so I'm hopeful that that will be passed. So, because the police in our group voted against that. And one of the police actually said that, um, that they needed every tool possible in order to get a conviction for a crime. And I said, oh, so that includes violating my fourteen-year-old civil rights. I know that was just one. My time is up, but I'm happy with that one. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Um, if we can hear from Stacy, same question?
Okay. I think that for me, one of the first things that I would do would look at the, um, immunity for police officers. I think we need to look at that as a city. Um, and make sure that if our officers have been involved in a situation that was inappropriate, that they could be held accountable for that. Um, I think that would include, um, making sure that there, if we create our own database that followed that officer. It doesn't matter if the state hasn't done that yet. Secondly, Secondly, I think that I would look at contracting out work, and how we contract out work, and how we make sure that the, we are including, we're having the first opportunity for the work in-house, and then making sure that we are using our trades and our labor organizations for anything that we are required or need to outsource.
Thank you, Stacy. Jared, same question?
Yeah, first of all, I would enact ordinances that support our working families, making sure that collective bargaining units are able to arise in some of our factories, and supporting the workers that work in some of the factories and shops that are outside or in the periphery of the city. Also, I'll adopt the ACLU model ordinance with regard to surveillance. First of all, we need to get rid of ShotSpotter, but if we're going to institute a program that surveils community, the community should be well aware. So I would enact ordinances that increase transparency within the city. We do a terrible job at that anyway. So we need ordinances that make sure citizens know what's going on. And finally, we need to address historic inequities. Black-owned businesses, we have to, in order to address the inequity, we have to go above and beyond to invest in, in those companies.
Thank you. Valerie, same question?
Yes, I would review all our ordinances, and I would bring, if we want to address discrimination, whatever kind of discrimination there is, we need to get input, not just on police reform, but on all the issues regarding discrimination, so that then we have an ordinance that is more broad, and, and it shows the diversity that, that, of our community. And also with, we need to kind of tie in, I don't know if this would take an ordinance, with the Board of Education and our fire and police and our trade unions to create apprenticeships, so that our young people in, in, at high school, they will have an opportunity to advance into the police, the fire, and our trades.
Thank you. All right, Shenice?
Yes, thank you for that question. So the first thing I will do is review the ordinances that we currently have in place. One thing I would do would definitely reverse the charter amendment that took place in the dismantling of the priority boards. We need to bring back and strengthen the voices of our residents. Secondly, I will look at how do we support ordinances and create ordinances that in fact protect and, and again, support our working families, looking at those areas to make sure that we are strengthening the city of Dayton by bridging the gap and addressing those restrictive policies that we have suffered from, from generations after generations, and really reversing to address those issues of inequality.
Thank you, Shenice. And Darryl, same question?
Sure. So I'm going to take this broadly in, in laws, and I think one of the things I would want to do is to take away any barriers that prevent us from doing local hiring. So if we have a project that we have dollars in, or other opportunities to incentivize, I would want to be able to local hire, and there's barriers there, so to, to remove those. I think we need to relook at how we elect the Dayton City Commission, and so that's a charter change. I think that having a robust conversation in our community about how city commissioners are elected, how many we have, whether they represent citywide or wards, would be valuable. And then, you know, the ordinances isn't the real issue in my mind, it's how we spend our resources.
Thank you, Darryl. Okay, this next question, I would like to start with Stacy. If priority boards are brought back, how would you work to get the younger voices that weren't present?
I think what I said about the, earlier about the Innovation Council was huge. I think we have to invite them to the table. We have to aggressively work with, we have to work with our, our rec centers, we have to work with our organizations that involve youth. One of the things I spent doing last week was talking to young people. I asked them, do you know what a commissioner is? Do you know what a mayor is? Do you know how the decisions that they make impact your parks? You know, what was, how did you feel when you went to the park and it was dirty? How did you feel when the rec centers were closed? Oftentimes, we make these decisions, but we don't have these conversations. And so in order to engage young people, you have to have these conversations with them. And I do believe that we need something that involves high school students, college students, young professionals, and as I said, our senior soldiers and retirees in a dialogue. And so then you start to, you know, the, the task force, it was a call, how many people want to be involved? That was 100-plus people that said they wanted to be involved. So we need to, we, we simply need to reach out and, and let them know that we need them to move this city forward.
Thank you, Stacy. Scott? Same question?
Yeah, the question is about including youth?
Yes, if priority boards are brought back, how would you work to get younger voices that weren't present?
Well, I, you know, I said before, I think it's important to have a broad range of voices. Everybody's voice is important, and it's easy to overlook children, or kids, or teenagers, or young adults, you know? People get the blinders on, they go to a group, and I think it just takes inviting young people. I think older folks have to appreciate that young people, whether you're talking teenagers or young adults, that they may not have the same perspective. They probably won't have the same perspective, but that's why they need to be at the table. I've been a mentor over the past five years at Dayton Voice Prep, which is now Roosevelt, at Dayton Leadership Academy, E.J. Brown, all those, and the Dayton Unit NAACP has high school and college units as well.
Thank you. All right, Jared, same question?
Yeah, so far, none of the candidates explained how, and there's a way to, there's a way that we can do this, right? So when I worked at the HRC, we hired a community organizer, and I have to mention, it's the same community organizer that put together these 125 people for these police reform groups. He's a, he was a heck of an organizer, and what he did was go into Residence Park and talk to people. We set at Estress Markets, knocked on doors, we, we went to pantries, we did whatever was necessary to get people engaged, and we said, hey, come to these neighborhood association meetings. And what we were able to do is, is decrease the average age of the neighborhood association meeting by at least 30 years. So we can create jobs. We gave a young professional a job. We can create jobs. We have community organizers in the city. We can give jobs to do that work, to bring people to the table, to make sure voices are heard.
Thank you, Jared. All right, Valerie, same question?
Yes, I would have the, the young people be represented on the, on the priority boards and on, on the various committees that there are, and set up a special committee so that it would be a youth committee, so they could address our, our, our parks, our recreation centers, what's lacking in them, also what's, what, maybe different programs could be in our school systems, and that we need to start educating our young people at grade school level about civics, our, our civic duty, about voting, what, what is a local government? How, how do the, how do the citizens get elected? What, what are their duties? What, what's their function? We, we don't, this is totally not taught in our school system anymore.
Ms. Beedee, can I pull on that thread a little bit? Because I, I really agree with Ms. Valerie. She's absolutely right. It's a piece of education that's missing. A lot of people in the city of Dayton, they don't even know what the priority board was or is, or even the possibilities of how we can revamp the priority boards and bringing a younger audience and younger participation. And it starts with making sure that there is education at the grade school level, onto high, onto high school, and bridging that gap, creating opportunities to learn about the Model Cities, I'm sorry, the Priority Board system, which in fact was created out of the Model Cities program due to the riots of the 1960s. A lot of people don't know that. The priority boards was instrumental in making sure that a lot of the seasoned workforce that we have in place, you talk about your senior soldiers, as Stacy alluded to, they started through the priority boards.
Thank you, Shenice. And Darryl, if you want to?
Sure.
Back on this question as well?
Yeah, I'm having a hard time with this question, because working here at Dayton Children's Hospital, what I'm seeing is a crisis of mental health issues with our young people, and we have a lot of people, a lot of our young people really struggling. And so my thinking is, how do we help these young people who are merely trying to survive? And how do we get them the mental health services? How do we build the relationships to help them healthy? How do we get them the food, the shelter, a safe neighborhood? How do we get them a neighborhood without violence, so they're not traumatized? And so those are, that's the question I'm trying to figure out, and how we can do the, the mentoring, put in the programming in place to build the relationships with young people. And I think at, at some point, for some of these, we also need to think about a job program. So I think those questions.
We're going to do that with $147 million, with a new slate of commissioners. We can make that happen. You're absolutely right. Mental health is an issue.
Thank you.
And we have to hire young people to communicate with young people. We can create jobs.
All right, so this next question, we're going to start with Shenice. What is one policy that you think you'll be the only commissioner that supports it, and you'll have to fight to convince others? And I may ask that again. What is, what is one policy that you think you'll be the only commissioner that supports it, you'll have to fight to convince the others to support?
I think we need to reexamine how we look at our commission, and Commissioner Fairchild talked about this. We need to, right now, we have the motto of city manager form of government, where we have five elected officials out of the 140,000 in our community in terms of our current population. Those five elected officials, are we in fact doing a disservice by only having five? Do we need to look at a model where we, that is potentially, that may resemble an Ottoman system? Should we have seven elected officials for the seven quadrants of the city of Dayton? We need to look at how we are truly representing the residents in the city of Dayton. I will be the first to stand up and to speak out on that issue, and to first bring it to the residents for them to have a say, if that's in fact something that they would like to see, that is instrumental in how we are governing, and then secondly, how they can have effective leadership that will, that, that can attend to their needs and their, their, their concerns on the one-on-one basis, because at this point, everyone is not well represented.
Shenice? Okay, Stacy, same question?
Something that I would be standing alone. I'm hearing squeaking noises. Somebody?
Yes, if everyone that's not speaking commute, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. Something where I would be standing alone, that is a tough question, because I have built my career on trying to bring together people and figuring out how we can, when we come from opposite ends, figure out how to make things, things work. I think one of the things that I may, I think we have a top-heavy government. It has been the same for quite some time, and so I would certainly push to eliminate a lot of our management positions, a lot of our administration positions. It has, it has been maintained, although our city size has been reduced and our staffing levels have been reduced, but we have not reduced our management staff and our administration staff, and I believe that might give me some, I might be there by myself advocating for that.
Thank you, Stacy. Jared?
Yes, I have maintained that we have to reimagine public safety. I think about the tragic video I just watched of Makai Bryant, and how an armed police officer wasn't necessary in that particular situation. I worked with three amazing community advocates, Marlon Shackelford, Darren Bird, and Tony Ruby. If we would have hired more people like that, and less armed police officers, less armed arms of the state to deal with these issues, I think we can make more significant process, uh, progress, and I think we can make communities safer that way. We have to reimagine how we think about how we keep communities safe, and I'm willing to fight tooth and nail for that.
Thank you, Jared. Scott?
Yeah, you know, Jared stole my thunder, but we were on the CPC together, so I know we, we think very much alike on, in that regard. I've been in so many meetings where citizens just weren't heard, and it always felt like we were just coming up against a, a wall. And, you know, I, I mentioned this before, that it's a shame that it took the death of George Floyd to get these five working groups in place, because a lot of the work that's been done there, we had done as part of the CPC, but it just never seemed to get traction, never was heard, never made it to the right people, was just ignored, pick, pick whatever the issue was. But yeah, I think we need to, to reimagine policing, and our citizens are afraid, not unlike the army officer who said, I'm afraid to step out of the car, and the officer pointing the gun at him and said, yeah, you should.
Thank you, Scott. Darryl?
So I have a track record of standing up as a lone voice. I've stood up for how neighborhood development, and I've stood up for our young people, and I've stood up for the HRC. I also was, when I came on the commission, someone who wanted to protect our water, and I found that the best way to do that was a charter change. And so through education and working with my colleagues and city administration, the law department was able to get them to see that how important that was, and to get that on the ballot this May. So I encourage everyone to vote yes on eight. Eight is great. Let's protect our water from privatization. But in terms of how to move this forward, I think engaging the citizens, if we want quality programming for our young people, our citizens need to speak up and make every candidate in this race know that that's a priority and that we want that. And if we have citizens demanding that, the next commission will make sure.
Thank you, Darryl. Valerie? Valerie, same question. Do you need me to repeat it?
Please.
Okay, no problem. What is one policy that you think you'll be the only commissioner that supports it, and you'll have to fight to convince the others to support?
Oh, wow. Well, that, that's gonna, probably the investments in the neighborhoods. I mean, you know, I, I wish there was a commitment already by our, our existing commissioners for the commitment to the neighborhoods and to our, our housing stock. This should have been done long, long, long time ago. So I think I'm going to be the odd man out on this, because I haven't seen that commitment from the city commission now. So when I become city commissioner, that'll be the first thing on the agenda. I'll be getting with all the other city commissioners and, and the mayor, and to really put together some kind of strategy, get citizen input, again, bring everybody to the table, and get, get really something going. You know, it has to take ordinances, has to take programs. That's what, well, that's what we need to do.
All right, we are going to move to the last question that we received from the audience. I would also like to encourage all of the candidates to please go back into the chat after this debate is concluded, to respond and to any questions that everyone may have put in the chat. I apologize to our viewers that we just don't have enough time to go through all of them, but I would like to ask one more question from the audience, and then after that, we will give each candidate one minute for their closing remarks. So the next question, I'm going to start with Valerie. What kind of partnerships will you build within public schools?
Okay, well, first of all, I would get together with the Dayton Public Schools and have meetings with them to review with, review all the different things that the, the... review with, review all the different things that the Dayton Public Schools now provide. And to try to identify, help them identify what areas that they could need help with. Is it truancy? Is it attendance? Is it changing the curriculum? Is it state testing? Is it youth programs? Is it mentorship? Is it apprenticeship? And so just review and, and help the school system as much as I, as the city commission can. So that our young people have the opportunity to go forward in their future.
Thank you, Valerie. Okay, Scott?
Thank you. You know, the role of the Dayton City Commission is to come alongside them. You know, the Dayton Public Schools has its own school board. I know most of the folks on the school board pretty well. And I would certainly come alongside and offer support for whatever they need. I would ask them, how can I help you? How can we help you? I've been a mentor in schools, spoken in schools many, many times. And I've seen firsthand the issues that some of the schools, you know, some of the ones that I've been in are facing. One of the schools, they couldn't even get, you know, substitute teachers. So I would go in to meet with one of the kids that I was mentoring at lunch and ask them about their day. And they're just, you know, are unsupervised. So, you know, I, I love the idea of improving our education system. It's going to benefit our kids so that they can graduate, hopefully go on to college and make a living wage.
Thank you, Scott. Jared?
Thank you.
Yeah, we all have friends. One of the reasons I voted against Charter Amendment for, which is a pay increase for our city commissioners is because we don't talk about the fact that the city, every city commissioner has a legislative aide. My directive to my legislative aide would be to go over there to Ludlow and meet at least once a week and be well aware of the policies and the things that are going on with our school systems and report back to me weekly on this and figure out how we can partner to solve these issues. Again, we have ways of communicating, but we just dropped the ball. We don't do a good job communicating with our county and we don't do a good job communicating with our school district. All of these things exist together and we have to collectively work on these issues. That's why I start my platform with this idea of collective impact. It takes all of us. It takes all the brain power, it takes all the passion, it takes all the drive to address these issues. And I believe that together we can do it.
Ms. Davita, may I? So here's the bottom line, where we at. Thank you, Ms. Davita. I appreciate it. You can't have a healthy school district if you don't have healthy communities. And that's exactly where we are. Darryl Fairchild and I, we talked about that in 2017. And here we are again. We have to address the ills in our community. Ninety percent of our students in DPS are living in poverty. So as the next Dayton City Commissioner, I'm going to work to address those ills, to address those issues by getting to the root causes. That is meaning that we create policy and programs, that we are supporting our working families, that we make sure that we are attracting livable wage jobs. And I'll say this one last point. I am a product of Dayton Public Schools. I believe in Dayton Public Schools. I know that it takes partnership and for us to work in, and to be able to communicate. Two out of three of my children, they attend Dayton Public Schools. I know the potential of Dayton Public Schools. But again, we have to build up our communities. We have to make sure that our neighborhoods are safe and stable. And we need a new commission to make sure that that's done.
All right, Darryl?
So, you know, the greatest issue facing our students is the fact that they've just come through a pandemic and have been, had a very erratic school learning environment over the last year. DPS is going to be receiving some rescue funds too. So we need to work in coordination with the school to make sure our children can catch up. You know, it's going to take a lot of effort to get them to catch back up to where they were. Being a parent of a DPS student, I see those issues firsthand. The city commission hasn't met regularly with the school board since I've been on the commission. My hope is that with a new mayor, we'll get to a place where we can have at least twice a year, if not quarterly, meetings with the school board. And I think we need to acknowledge that there are going to be four school board positions up for election. And my hope is that we can recruit strong candidates to run for school board so that we can bring new leadership to the school board.
Thank you, Darryl. Okay, Stacy?
Thank you. The school board and the city commission used to have retreats. And as Commissioner said, that has not been happening. There needs to be those regular retreats where those, the commission and the school board sit down and discuss and map out exactly the direction that they see the city and the school district going together. The, the city commission also needs to work on advocating for school funding to be fixed. We have a community problem. We have to make sure that absolutely we are increasing our standard of living in our communities. But we also have to begin to be an advocate with the school board to improve school funding. It has been determined that our schools are funded illegally and that has been, that decision's been out there. The legislature hasn't done anything about that. And so that is one thing that we need to do to advocate. The civil service board deals with hiring. We need to be more closely involved in that process as well.
Stacy, and thank you, everybody, for participating in today's debate. We are at the end and this is your chance to do a one-minute closing. And just be sure that you are answering why people should vote for you over the other candidates. I would like to start with Ms. Valerie.
Thank you. Yes, I appreciate you're getting us all involved in this forum tonight. There's a lot of issues facing the city of Dayton. A lot of it has been because of the tornado, because of COVID. There's all sorts of reasons. But we still have to address the problems, what has been presented to us. The city of Dayton is at an ebb. We, if we continue to allow our neighborhood to deteriorate, we won't have any income tax or property taxes. The property, there won't be property tax being paid. A lot of the property tax is not being paid. So we have to encourage stability in our neighborhoods. And we have to start working with our neighborhoods, all the people in our neighborhoods. And the city of Dayton needs to be the leader in that. And as a city commissioner, I'm committed to our neighborhoods.
Thank you, Valerie. Scott, you're up next.
Thank you. While, while other candidates are telling you what they're going to do, I like to talk about what I've done because I have a track record. I'm the most qualified to address food deserts in Dayton. I've been running a mobile food pantry for a dozen years, feeding 1,000 households. That's 3,000 people every month. You know, Gym City Market is great, but that doesn't fix the problem. I have a background in advertising and marketing that I can use to promote our city, to attract business and to help better communicate with our citizens. I'm passionate about education. We talked a little bit about working with the school board. You know, we have about a 70% graduation rate. That means every year we have 300 kids not graduating from high school and having no access to a decent paying job. I'm into economic development, which is part of my background. I had a small business for six years. I've helped.
Thank you, Scott. All right, next up, Stacy?
Thank you, Davita. Thank you again for having us. As I stated earlier, this is about the future of our community. This is about the direction of our community. And we have to have people who have experience. We have to have people who have vision. I have the ability and have brought people together for the last 30 years. And so I have the ability to build on what has worked. We have to absolutely not throw out everything that has worked. We have to take those models. We have to build on those models. And I have the ability to do that. I have the experience to take what isn't working and be a bridge to a brighter future. I have worked these budgets. I have dug deep. I have been creative in trying to figure out how we provide the necessary services to our citizens. I have worked in the community. I have worked with our children. I've been a mentor. And, and so I've done and been involved in this community and I'll be a champion for the city of Dayton.
Thank you, Stacy. Next up, Jared?
The harsh reality in this country is when white people catch a cold, black people catch the flu. So when Dayton is suffering, West Dayton suffers that much more. It's time out for that. We have to be aggressive about addressing these systemic inequities. We have to be aggressive about creating a society in which everybody, regardless of their color, their skin, has an elevated standard of living. We cannot no longer invest in a public safety system that doesn't make us more safe. We have to reimagine public safety in such a way that actually benefits the community. And we can't wait on infrastructure. We have to be aggressive about rebuilding our infrastructure. If our roads cost people money, that's a problem. We need to have roads that people can drive on that won't cost them money and contribute to the systemic inequities that contributes to the financial inequality. We need to create policies that create jobs and support working families. And I have a track record of being a proven advocate for people, and I will continue to be.
Thank you, Jared. All right, Ms. Shanice?
Yes, let me just say this before my minutes start. Ms. Davita, you did a fine job. Thank you very much for moderating.
Thank you.
Listen, there are a number of candidates that you see before you that's running for Dayton, for Dayton City Commission. I have the proven track record. I have the experience and the passion to go along with that. I'm a former city of Dayton employee. I have done the job. I know how to do the job. And as mentioned before, day one, I don't need training ground. I can get in there and get the job done. So I'm asking the voters in the city of Dayton to be intentional about who you vote for this election cycle. Because I want you to vote as if your life depends on it, because it truly does. The fact that we have $147 million that's coming into the city of Dayton is huge. That means we're at a pivotal point. We need to address the ills in our community. We are labeled as one of the most impoverished cities in the country. That's unfortunate and we need to do better. We need new leadership to push us over to address those issues. And as the next Dayton City Commissioner, I'm the one to get the job done. I hope that you, again, you would do your research and. I've been doing that for the past 15 years or so. Thank you.
You, Shanice. And last but not least, Mr. Darryl Fairchild.
I want to echo Shanice's word. Davita, you've done a great job. I want to thank the West Side Democratic Club for the opportunity. I want to thank the other candidates for putting yourself out there and for this debate tonight. I think metal sharpens metal. And so this debate's been good. And I would thank those out on Facebook who have put the comments in there, encouraging us and challenging us. So thank you. You know me. I've been a classmate of yours, a teammate of yours. I've been in your neighborhood, in your community center, in your churches for over 30 years. And I have a track record of a commissioner. No one else has that. You can look at what I've done as an elected commissioner. And you can see that I've fought for the values that are important to you and to our communities. And I had some successes. There's still work to do. We've got a neighborhood plan now and, and we're protecting the water. An issue that has, you know, been devastating for people in Flint, Mississippi. And so protecting our water is crucial, particularly for our West Side residents. And so you know me, I have a track record. And if anyone knows how to use that $147 million well, it's me because I've been in the seat. I understand how it can be used and where it needs to be used. I asked for your vote on May 4th. I'm Darryl Fairchild. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fairchild. And just kind of as you said, we want to make sure everybody gets out on May 4th to put your votes in. And also want to point out, you do not have to wait until May 4th. You can go down and vote early. Get down to the Montgomery County Board of Elections. Address is 451 West Third Street. The Dayton Young Black Professionals Group is going to be having meetups this Friday and next Friday as well at the Board of Elections. They're also going to be having a topic of discussion this evening at 9:00 PM to talk about the debate. So if you want to get more involved and have more questions and discussions that you want to have about the debate tonight and the candidates that are here tonight working to get your vote, please join them tonight. Also, I would like to thank the Montgomery County West Side Democratic Club for reaching out to me and giving me this opportunity to be the moderator this evening. This was something that was out of my comfort zone and I'm glad that I was able to participate. Like a lot of other people watching tonight, I don't know what I didn't know. And I still don't kind of know 100% what route I want to go. But I really appreciate the candidates taking time out of their day to talk with us. And it gave me a lot of things to go home and think about. So I appreciate your time just as well as you appreciate mine.
Yeah, I convince you in that, in your, in your thoughts. I can help you with that.
You have been such, you've been on it tonight. You are on it. But thank you for that. I just want to make sure everybody does take the time to follow the Montgomery County West Side Democratic Club as well. So thank you all. And have a good evening.
Thank you.
You made a great job.
Thank you.